Hey everyone, this is the Real Change Wilmington Podcast, episode 27. From City Council to School Board with our guest today, Bill Learman. And like always, I'm your host Dustin Pierce.
And I'm the co-host Emily Spencer.
We're doing things a bit different today. This is going to be a live podcast where it's going to let the camera and mic roll and just have a discussion. Bill reached out to us. People may know him, he likes to talk and likes to get things done. So he wanted to go and share some ideas with us today and we're going to let him do that. So Bill, we're going to start it by just having you just explain or tell people who you are.
Well, first off, I would like to say, yeah, right, exactly. I would like to say there is something significant about 27. That was my birth date, May 27th. So I guess it's kind of fitting, but I do appreciate it. You know, my history in Wilmington goes back to 1978. I'm a product of Little Miami.
Is that when Wilmington was founded?
No. I feel that way. My gray hair would show that. But you know, my inspirations growing up, I helped my dad in farming and wanted to get into broadcasting. And it's ironic, we had a student radio station at Little Miami. It was actually licensed through the FCC, non-commercial, meaning it was educational per se. But you could pursue getting the radio operator's license, which used to be a requirement. And I was interested in getting in the program. Little did I know the history of Wilmington with that station. Because the tower for that station came from the Clinton County Air Force Base, closed in 1972. I owe a lot to a man by the name of Fred Kress. Fred was the high school principal at the time. Later became an administrator, superintendent at Little Miami. He had the vision, the idea of starting a student radio station because it enhanced the careers for people wanting to get in that field. So I was fortunate to get in the class and graduated in 1976. Went to a broadcasting school down in Blue Ash. Wasn't the International School of Broadcasting. It was called something different back then. But it enabled me to get that license. And as I said, back in those days, you had to have a radio operator's license to get involved.
To be on the air until?
Be on the air. You have to take responsibility for it. There's reasons why. A lot of it has to do with regulations and you know, you've got to make sure you use appropriate language, so on. So we've got to sign off on all that. I know, things are a little bit more relaxed these days.
Emily and I don't have our podcasting license.
Is that still true today?
Well, they kind of relaxed it. I remember back in the mid eighties, kind of softened a little bit on that. But I was able to actually obtain a license called the First Class Operator's License, which you need to have in order to take responsibility for the transmitter. So I guess until the day the Lord calls me home, I could always be an engineer if I wanted to do that for a radio station. So a man by the name of Dave Walker hired me. You know, just out of broadcasting school, was going to do news and sports and things along those lines. And just, you know, small market radio station, WKFI Studios. They're out where Rich Bowles, the minister now at the Church of God. There's where the studios used to be. The two towers are still there ironically. And the frequency was 1090 AM. And we later acquired the FM station, which used to be known as WDHK. At one time, we actually had two stations in the town. The FM station was located over behind Alumni Field, Football Field, where Hope Bell has a facility now. It's at 333 West Clinton Street. So there used to be an FM station in town and an AM station in town. They later merged in the eighties and then we renamed it WSWO FM. And our concept was, we did a lot of rural stuff on the AM, which was a daytime only station. And we did a lot of farm programming. Came up with a slogan of all things, this is a natural, I guess, "We Keep Farmers Informed." And then for the FM, it was serving southwestern Ohio. Did a lot of sports coverage and both high school and also Wilmington College. A dream that I had was want to do play-by-play. I mean, I wanted to be a baseball announcer, a basketball announcer. I aspired, like Al Michaels was the voice of the Reds back then. My real idol, and I think people know this to this day, is Vin Scully, who did the Dodger games. And I always wanted to be the second Vin Scully who did the Dodger games. And if you see some of my stuff on YouTube, you'll see things where I do a lot of things that he's talked about in his speech and so forth, when he got into the Baseball Hall of Fame. And I was fortunate, Dave Walker gave me the ability to fulfill those dreams. Wilmington College at the time, Bill Ramsire was the football coach and the athletic director. And although we couldn't broadcast the games live, we did them tape delay. This is so funny, the way this all came about. I told Dave, "I want to do the Wilmington College Games on the air." "Well, we've got to sell the airtime to do it." I said, "Well..." He said, "Bill, I just don't know if it'll work." Well, what I came up with was an idea. I says, "I'll go out and tape the games. I'll get somebody to be my co-host and be on there as a color analyst." And I says, "Why don't we play them back on Sunday afternoon after church programming?" He said, "Okay, we'll see what the response is like." So John Moore was the football coach at Wilmington High School. And he had been in coaching and knew Bill real well. And so we'd go out and I'd sit in the stands with everybody, kind of like what Harry Carey used to do with the Chicago Cubs. And so I had a tape recorder with me and just sit right there and broadcast the games and tape delay. And so whenever I'd stop it, I'd say, "And we'll be back for second quarter action right after these announcements." So then on Sundays, I'd go in after the church programming was done at 12 noon and play these back. Well, we got a good following. And in 1980, lo and behold, Wilmington College was really doing well, made the NAI playoffs. Dick Jones was owning the station at the time, was the owner. They moved, they merged two stations together. They wanted us to broadcast the playoff games. Oh my gosh, here's the opportunity. Dick wanted to come along and that was fine. So I played number two role. I let him do the actual play-by-play of the games and I did the announcing, did the color analyst and so forth. And we made it all the way to the National Championship Game. It was held out, I think, near Spokane, Washington. We flew back and I remember this very clearly. He walked into David's office and said, "David, I'll tell you something right now. We're going to do Wilmington College Football and Basketball starting next year." He says, "Billy's going to do the games, he can get somebody to help him." Well, it was, it was fun. It really was. We hired, I brought on Roger Barber, lifelong friend from Sabina. He was interested in it and it just all kind of fell into place. So for years, we did Wilmington College Football, Home and Road, live games, live broadcasts. We got phone lines and so forth. And we did a lot of the home games. You know, I look back, I worked with guys like Jerry Sheedy, the girls' basketball coach. And Roger was up there with me on the mezzanine broadcasting the games. We had Bill Newland as the men's coach. We had Scott Stimple, who's now down at Mason ironically, is the athletic director there. He was our basketball coach at Wilmington College too. And it worked out really great. I made a decision in 1985 to kind of step away a little bit. I wanted to get away from sports and do some other things. And in 84, I guess it was, we hired Jeff Hibbs. Now I'll tell you what, people will tell me to this day, "Bill, you're great on play-by-play. You do an excellent job." I would always say I'm number two at play-by-play. Jeff Hibbs was exceptional. He could create the atmosphere, the enthusiasm. I mean, he was really good. And so he started doing the Wilmington College Games. I was deciding I wanted to get into programming more, become a program director per se, and enhance more with our farm programming. So I kind of stepped away a little bit from that. A career-changing decision happened for me in 1985. Bill Wills, who I had recommended to be hired here at WKFI, right out of Lynchburg Clay High School, right for his senior year. He had gone to the quote, "The big one, 700 WLW." And he called me one day and he says, "Hey Learman, Wills is here." He says, "You're going to get a phone call later today." And he says, "You better listen to what this guy has to say." I said, "Okay, who is it?" He goes, "Ed Johnson." I said, "You mean the guy with the ABN?" He goes, "Yeah." He said, "He wants to talk to you." I said, "What for?" He said, "He needs a farm, Assistant Farm Director. Mark Davis is moving on." That was his number two guy. And he said, "He wants you." I said, "Okay, I'll, I'll talk to him." I mean, I wasn't interested in this job. There was no way in the world I was going to leave KFI. I think I'd be married there for life.
That was the job that was in Columbus?
That was the job in Columbus, yeah. On Lane Avenue, right down from the OSU Studios. So I talked with Ed, we met in London and I turned it down. I just didn't think it was the right move to make. I went home, talked with-
Did you go to London to have a conversation?
No, I didn't fly to London.
I'm just kidding.
No, I wouldn't have flown, so.
Not, not bad London, a different, Ohio London.
That was so funny though. So the very next day, we didn't have cell phones back then, okay? So I said, "Well, we'll see if he calls me back." I told him, I said, "I'd like to have a little bit more money, I might consider it and so forth." Called me back the next day and he said, "Billy, I'm going to move forward on this." He says, "I'm going to make an offer you can't refuse." So he hit me with a little bit better salary figure. I really, I don't like saying that, people can kind of draw their own conclusions. But back in this time, $20,000 was pretty good, back in 1985. And the way he did it was 19.5 in salary and then $500 because I had to buy a car. So I ended up meeting Steve Hague, of all people, down in Hillsborough at Hague Motors, where I later went to work as service manager. But I bought a car, a Chevy Corvette for $6,000 and drove that thing back and forth to Columbus. And I'll tell you what, for me, from a radio standpoint, it was a career-changing decision. I mean, where else could you go but where you would meet people like Dave Thomas that founded Wendy's? Bob Evans, Bob Evans Restaurants. And I mentioned to Ed, this is funny. I mentioned to Ed in my younger days that I wanted to be an astronaut of all things. And he said, "Why is that?" I said, "Oh, I've always liked the space program and science and things like that." And I said, "You know," I says, "Think about John Glenn orbiting the earth." You know, I said, "That was, that was kind of historic, you know." And I says, "It's kind of ironic, now he's our senator." And so one day I'm walking in the steps there, I always went in at nine o'clock in the morning. And I walked up the steps and Michelle assaulted me there and she says, "Hey Billy, did you go and see EJ this morning?" I says, "Everything okay?" And she goes, "Oh yeah, he's just got a little surprise for you." So I walked in and we said hi and so forth. And he said, "Remember that story you told me up in London that you wanted to meet Senator Glenn?" I says, "Oh yeah, yeah, I would like to do that someday." He said, "Oh, he's coming in for an interview." I said, "When?" He said, "He'll be here in about five minutes." Ding, it was the intercom. "Could you send Billy out here in the foyer?" Yeah, I walk out and there he is, Senator John Glenn. I'd go home and tell at the end of this and she thinks I'm crazy. She says, "You're making this up." I said, "Honey, I can't make this up. This is the truth. This is actually happening." But no, it was a great time working for Ed. Later had a chance though to come back and rejoin the KFI staff, thanks to Rick Johnston. I know I drove him nuts, but Rick was a great guy to work for. He's the guy that succeeded Dave when Dave left. And you know, I came back and I stayed at the station up until the time it left in 2003.
How old were you at the time?
Well, let's see. So we're talking about 23 years ago, I guess more or less, or 27 years ago when the station shut down in '03. It was kind of a unfortunate situation. Station got put up for sale. Breitner Management owned at the time. And they, they were putting a lot of money into TV. They owned the station in Florida. And so the station was sold. The FM became part of the K-Love approach, K-Love concept. We were just a big program and I understand that. And then the AM became part of the Mullins family with Joe Mullins up in Xenia. So unfortunately, we didn't have local radio. It went away. So then I got in the car business and I've been there ever since. But you know, it was kind of interesting. I still was able to keep my toe in the water. Mark Huber allowed me to join with the News Journal. I covered games for a lot of years. And another phone call that was interesting, Keith Madison called me. Said, "Hey Learman," he said, "got an idea for you. We know the station's going away, but we're going to do our Massy Ball Games on, on, on the webcast." He says, "How would you like to be the voice of the Falcons?" Wow, would I love to be the voice of the Falcons? Yeah, he said, "I can't pay anything." I said, "That's okay, I'll do it." Because you know, it fulfilled a need for me because I still able to stay involved. And I met Brian Mudd and did those games for a couple of years. Developed quite a, quite a history there with them and everything. But you know, my radio career, it was, it has challenges. It was up and down. It was a great way to make a life. You know, it's interesting being now on this side of the microphone.
Yeah.
And doing that.
You're so popular.
Yeah, I can tell you stories till the cows come home. But you know, basically, I covered city council a lot. Would sit beside Clarence Graham, great swagger.
You covered it in what way?
For the News Journal. I would, actually not for the News Journal, I covered it for the radio station. And I would, you know, report on the follow-up of council meetings the next day.
So you would record the talks or you just listen and then talk about it?
Listen, make notes and then get sound bites from the council members afterwards. And I'm sitting beside Clarence and he'd always kid me, he says, "You might break the story first, but I get to have the last word." But Clarence and I had a great relationship. And so I forget exactly what all transpired. I got the idea that I wanted to run for council. 1983, I think it was. And the guy that held the seat, it was the fourth ward, which is on the western edge of town, out past where the high school is and everything. His name was Jim Stanfield.
That's where I'm at, fourth ward.
Okay, fourth ward. So Jim Stanfield was Democrat and I filed as Republican. So you know, we had the runoff in November. Lost my first seat by like 44 votes. It later came down to 38 votes, something like that.
38 votes.
Well, you know, it just wasn't meant to be. So I kind of put it on the back burner. 1985, that very same year that I took that job with Ed Johnston, working with the ABN, we had a change in judges. And Herman Cartwright became the new probate and juvenile judge. And so there was a vacancy for council at large. My council mentor, I owe a lot to him, Nick Evelyn, he contacted me, he says, "Billy, here's your chance." He says, "Let Tom McMillan know you want to be the council member." I says, "Nick, they, they won't appoint me. Maybe there'll be somebody else." He goes, "I think you've got a great shot, Bill." So I went out and met with Tom. Nick was with me at his farm out on Gurneeville Road, 4242 Gurneeville Road. Remember the address well. And if you wanted to do anything politically, you went through Tom McMillan. Now ironically, Mary Kay Vance, who is our auditor today, that's her father. God rest his soul, what a great man he was. But I met with him and talked with him. And so lo and behold, things came down that they, they recommended me to fill the vacancy. Paul Riley got to swear me in, late Judge Paul Riley that I had a great friendship with. This was in, like I said, late 1985. And come to find out that I guess maybe I was one of the youngest elected council members. At that time, actually appointed though, Butch Peel.
You were 25, right?
I was 25, yeah. Butch Peel was a long-time council member and somebody told me he was either 24 or 25. And so it was a great run. I was there in my first several years on council. I was there through like 1993. I was working nights at ABX also when I was lead in hazmat. And so I got to a point where I was going into work a lot earlier in the evening. And so I just kind of decided to step away from it. I really didn't want to do it any longer. And so stepped away from council at that point. But I felt like, you know, I'd fulfilled some things I wanted to see done. We got a new city hall built, worked with Nick. So you know, it was just time to move on. And so then what transpired was vacancy on the school board. And it was ironic how that all came about. Tom Rayburn-
So you're running for school board, but you were also on-
I'm running now for school.
But you were also on at one time?
Yeah, I was running before, yeah, actually a couple of different times. So going back to the way that all evolved, Tom Rayburn was a longtime veteran member of the school board. He was employed by Mac Tools, but they were shutting down their facility in Sabina. And so he was commuting down to Georgetown. And it got to a point where he just, you know, couldn't maintain all that, didn't want to be on the board any longer. So had a chance to get, had to get a chance.
Oh, we got a, we got a special guest.
Oh, okay, great. You've got a surprise for now.
Who was here? Oh, come on.
So I-
Is it the mailman?
So I got a chance then to get on the school board.
We can take a time now, hold on.
Okay, we'll take a time out and see what's going on. We'll resume with this later, take two. Oh, this is live by the way, right?
I mean, we might, this might keep, who was that? Oh, okay.
It's the doctor's office that was in here. Can you just sleep in there?
Oh, okay. Anyways, I'm sorry.
So I got on the school board, let's see, 1995, Chuck Dowler was our superintendent. And I stayed through like 2000 and then here again, I talked about Rick Johnston. Rick contacted, I was in the, I was working at the car dealership at the time down there in Hillsborough. And he said, "Billy, would you like to get back in radio again?" I said, "Yeah, I miss it, I want to come back." So I stepped away from the school board, came back to the radio station and forgot about the school board for a while. Later came back, what, my second time around was in '07, I think, when Dr. Weatherington stepped aside. And I stayed on the school board through 2015. Felt like at that time, both my sons had gone through the system. Steven graduated in 2000 and Scotty graduated in 2013. And I said, "You know, I don't want to do this forever. I'll let somebody else, somebody else do it." And so I had made that decision not to run again. And Michael Flanagan took my spot. Michael and Kevin were on the ballot at the time. And fast forward now to this year where we're at. So I'm on city council currently. I will be leaving though in a little over a month. And there's two or three reasons why, okay? And you'll understand my thoughts on this. Don Wells is the designated to be the third ward councilman after the first year. I told everybody in 2022, "I'm not running again. I'm done with city council. I've done 15 years." And I'm thinking about running for the school board, thinking at that point. So I've made the decision now, since I am filed and on the ballot, it's not right to try and stay on city council and perhaps use it as a stepping stone or however that might be construed. It's the best thing to do to let Don take over a little bit early. They'll be of course, starting budget negotiations in October. And I just feel it's right.
Was it budget negotiations for what?
For the city, for, for next year, you know, talking about the budget and everything. And it's the right thing for me to do to wind my council career down early. Let Don have a chance to get on board in early October. And by that time, I will be really, really seriously thinking about my, my involvement for the school board. Because number one, there is a contested race. There's three people for two seats. Kevin Snar, myself, and I believe her name is Alice Silverstrom, I believe is her name, will be on the ballot. And so I want to focus my energies on the schools. At the same time, working to get this school levy passed that we desperately, desperately need to enhance the future for Wilmington City School students. So you know, I appreciate the opportunity to use this venue here. I think you guys do a great job with Real Change Wilmington. And I just want to let everybody know, I've enjoyed my time on council, but it is, it's the right thing to do. I know I get a little bit emotional, but it's the right thing to do. Step away now and let Don have a chance to get on board. As you well know, you come to the council meetings a lot. We've had a little bit of consternation here lately with some things going on. But let's fast forward to 2024. We're going to have some new leadership. Pat Healy will be our new mayor. We'll have some new council people. Looks like Josh Schlebach will be first ward. Michael Snar, that I sit beside, he'll be in the second ward again. My seat will be occupied by Don Wells. And then Rob Osborne, who sits to my left, he's going to be back. And then we'll have some new at-large members. Nick Evelyn and I are both kind of winding it down like Joe Nuxhall used to say. We're rounding third and heading for home. And then we'll have David Nannstad and Jonathan McKay, of course, will be an at-large member. And so will Jamie Knowles. And so 2024 will be a year of change, but kind of precipitating here a little bit early in 2023.
So what are some of the things you mentioned earlier that you're proud of during your time on city council that you've accomplished or seen accomplished?
If we go back to my really first time, it would be back in the eighties after I came on board. One thing that I take a lot of value in is our transit service. I mean, what a great operation it is. And it just came up in the course of a council meeting. Nick was our mayor of course, and Browns was the taxi service at the time. Something happened with insurance and they lost their ability to operate. They lost their license. And so some of the people that were on council with us, I remember some names vividly. Dale Hemmon, that's Dave Hemmon, the minister, that's his father. And Dave Hockaday. I liked Dave working real well. And he always used this phrase, "We've got to look into our crystal ball." And boy, did he ever look into our crystal ball on this one. And Nick and we all kind of kicked around the idea, "Why don't we just do it ourselves?" Yeah, what would it take? So we took the bull by the horns, the sangos. We bought some sedans, we bought two or three blue sedans out of Busch Chevrolet Buick at that time from George Bush. He hired Jeannie Foster to be our first transit director. And you know, our transit is the envy of everybody. Everybody would love to have it and it's just a, a great thing. And I know they're wanting to enhance the, you know, with more hours and more availability. But I look back and I think it's one of the best things the city ever did. We started the homeless shelter, you know, Denise does a great job there. I wish that we could do more with it, but for the people that are down on their luck and have had some things happen in their life, certainly it's, it's a great facility and a great thing. We're sitting across from the General Denver here and of course, right beside it's the city hall. And it's so ironic that, you know, Nick was the driving force behind that, trying to get a new city hall built. Our old one was at 56 West Locust Street. I remember some council meetings. If it was raining, the rain was coming down through the ceiling. It was just decrepit. It was rundown and the police department was there too. And we just needed to have, you know, the ability to have a better city hall. And so we kicked around the ideas where we were going to have it. Where the Chili Parlor used to be at one time down the corner. We looked down there at Shrew Tree Street, but it just wasn't, the flood plain was, was not right or something like that. And Nick came up with this idea right here across from the municipal lot. And an ironic thing, it involved me directly. Jim Brady, who is our current superintendent of schools. His father, James Brady Senior, didn't like the idea that we were going to pursue a city hall. So he challenged me for the third ward council seat. And I survived that challenge. That's how I got to know Jim, of course. But it was ironic, you know, I was the third ward councilman. I was fortunate enough to win, 59 to 41. We survived a referendum on the, on the city hall. Some people didn't want to see it built. But we got it constructed in 1992. And as Nick and I both said, one of the reasons we wanted to come back and be on council here at the end was when they finally burned the mortgage, which we did a couple of years ago in 2021.
Oh, nice.
That finally got paid for. But you know, you look at the city hall where it is now and a lot of people really look at it and say, "What a nice building it is." It's, it's needing some repairs and so forth. But at that time in 1992, it was just a godsend for us to get that city building built. Fast forward to when I came on council in 2016, I succeeded Randy Milburn for a council vacancy at large. I really didn't anticipate it would ever happen again. I told Dee, "My political future's over with, I'm not going back." She says, "Yeah, I've heard that story before." And she reminds me about that all the time, but-
I think I read in the News Journal that like you were stepping down from something, just in the time with your wife, and now you're doing this. And I'm like, when is he supposed to have his wife?
But I, every move I make with her, because she's my sounding board and she's my, she, I call her my rock. She calls me her rock. So I guess we tolerate each other is the way to put it. But I do remember what John said when I came on board back in 2016 to fill that vacancy with Randy Milburn. He said, "Bill, what are some of the things you'd like to see us do in the future for city hall?" And I says, "John, I've got three ideas here." I said, "Number one, you've got to get our police and fire departments fully staffed or at least bring them up to where they should because we had several vacancies there." And I says, "We've got the worst road in the county, David's Drive. We've got to do something about it." And the third thing was getting the Romback Avenue thing squared away one way or the other. And I know there's been a lot of consternation about Romback Avenue. But fast forward now, seven years later, almost seven years, and we've been able to accomplish some things. Our police and fire department are properly staffed. And it'd be nice to do more. I'd like to see a new fire station in the future, but we'll just have to see how the voters would feel about that down the road. And-
What is the importance of David's Drive?
You look at David's Drive, it's the connector, of course, now you have the government offices there where Southern State used to be for the county. You've got the sheriff's office. We've got the trucking company, Sewell Trucking is there. And you know, it's the main artery that connects back to Romback Avenue. It, from what I've been told, it was actually designed to be a residential street, but it became kind of more for industry and so forth. We've got MSAR back there. We've got other facilities that are back there now. But, but that road is just, let's face it, it's rundown. It's the worst road in the county. You can't hold a cup of coffee in your hand without it spilling. But we've got one phase of it done.[1608.85] We've got two more phases to go and it's gonna be the nicest road in the county when it's all said and done. Thank goodness.
Well, they call it Dragonback. What do you think they're gonna call it now?
I just hope that they look back. It was named after Maynard Davis. Dana Dunn talked about this too. Maynard Davis was the longtime president for Clinton County National Bank, now known as People's Bank. You know, it's gone through some name changes. And it was named after him. They had a, an entity back, back there to enhance, you know, industrial development and things along those lines. But, you know, one thing you gotta say is it's a main artery that connects 134 with 22 and 3, which is Romback Avenue, of course. Now, what I would say about Romback Avenue is this, and I've taken a lot of heat from it. I've taken some bullets, no doubt about it. That's okay. I'm, I'm a big boy. I can handle it, okay? I know not everybody likes the no left-hand turns. But having said that, there is a way that you can turn into Duke and Duchess now. There is a left-hand turn there. We're looking at getting all the lights synchronized and getting them all straightened out. And we will be doing a traffic study in September. I've talked with Paul, our engineer. And hopefully we'll be able to petition to the state of Ohio to get a traffic light, traffic control signal, put in the entrance, let's say into the car wash and hotels back there and where Aldi's is and across from Busch Auto Place. And I've met personally with Mark myself and I've also had discussions with the businesses along those lines. Of course, tire discounters who I work for, that I did work in the Wilmington store, but I'm up in Washington Courthouse now. I know the people that own all those businesses would like to see a bona fide turn signal right there. Now, once this turn signal would be approved and get in and be operational, it kinda helps facilitate the reason why we took down the light at Taco Bell. You know, there was a light there at Taco Bell. It went away as part of the new construction. But if everybody would fast forward and use David Hockaday's phrase, look into your crystal ball. In 2024, I think we'll see the real enhancements of what we're doing right now. And it's certainly gonna be a lot better in the future. But let's face it, Romback Avenue became a five-lane highway in 1985. I know quite well because Deanna and I were living out on Oak Street, which is behind the, the current Fifth Third Bank. It was Pizza Hut at one time and we were renting a house from Tom and Don Armstrong at the time. And I remember when that widened, thank goodness for Congressman Bob McEwen, he got a lot of federal money for us to widen Romback. But you can only imagine how it used to be when it was just a two-lane highway with a turn lane in the middle. And so now it's a lot better, but certainly improvements are gonna be made. And of course, with the new administration coming on board, I'm sure Pat may have some ideas about some things that he would like to see within the future, but.
Do you think people are frustrated with the amount of lights that are on Romback now?
I would say yes and no.
Okay.
I know there's been some consternation about Kettering. We had to put the light back in. Originally, it was gonna be taken out.
Okay.
But for Kettering to come in there, we need to have that light there for Kettering Hospital. And.
They required that?
Yes, they did. That was part of the stipulation for them to come here. So I think the biggest problem has been the lights being all strung together, but not interconnected. And once they are interconnected, I think you'll see a better flow of traffic. Now, one additional thing that I can tell you about, this is currently being discussed and acted upon in council at this point. We are going to lower the speed limit coming in from the east, okay? It will go from 50 miles an hour to 35 miles an hour. It should reduce the, the amount of, the impact of the traffic coming in from the east side. Say if you're coming from Subline and per se and you're coming in towards the city.
That's the stretch between like SFM and Walmart, right?
Exactly. Yeah. Starting at Walmart or Smith Vike building or SFM is always coming in, Smith Vike. But yeah, the SFM Insurance Agency and those buildings along in there, everything will be 35 miles per hour. And then also I wanted to mention something in regards to David's Drive. David's Drive will have a speed limit of 45 miles an hour. That's what's been recommended for travel on, on David's Drive. So.
As opposed to what?
Uh, it's like 50 or 55 right now. Yeah. So it is going to be reduced. It will be 45 miles per hour. It will be the speed limit fixed for David's Drive here in the future. You know, we were talking about some other things too. I looked just down the street here to what we've done with Sugar Tree Street. The Sugar Tree Street corridor down here, look at all the enhancements and what it's done to bring people into the downtown and into Wilmington. That's been a struggle for years. I remember that, you know, we were wanting to do things to enhance the value of our downtown. And you look at what the bonds have done with Sugar, with the, that.
Tin cap.
Tin cap, yeah. Tin cap on Sugar Tree. I'll get it right, Bill.
Yeah, yeah.
It, it's great what they've done. To have the street fairs that we do and to have Rock the Block coming in town. It's doing a lot for our community.
And the escape was reopened again.
And the escape was reopened again. You know, lots of times people would say, there's nothing to do in Wilmington on the weekends. That is not true. You can't say that anymore. There's things going on. You look at what's going on with the Murphy Theater, you know, the nude guy running the theater. He's got great ideas, bring a lot of shows to town. You know, as I've often liked to say, and I've used this as my phrase in the past. Wilmington is a great place to live, to work, to have a family and enjoy quality of life. At the end of the day, that's what matters. And we're seeing all that happening now. It's been a struggle. It hasn't been easy. But we're certainly better off today than we were, you know, several years ago. Wilmington used to have a reputation of being one of America's best small-town cities. I'd like to see that happen again in the future. But if you look at the things we are trying to do and the things we're trying to accomplish, and a lot of these businesses too, they're the stakeholders. They're the ones that are spending the money.
Right.
They're the ones that we deserve to do things to help them. You know, a personal thing I wrestled with was the Dora, okay? I drink occasionally and don't drink hard liquor. I'll drink a beer every now and then, but I kinda wrestled with that. I really didn't know if that'd be the right thing to do. But I can't let a personal feeling affect what I think is gonna be better for the community. And I felt like in the long run, it's the right thing to do. As long as it's controlled and done in the right way, I see other communities doing it. So why can't we do it in Wilmington?
Yeah.
Yeah. What's wrong with it, you know? As long as it's being policed, if you wanna call it that, or being done the right way. I, I think it's probably the right thing to do. Again, if we want to enhance downtown traffic and bring businesses in and people, and people coming in, that's the main thing. We want people to come to Wilmington. That's what it's all about. It's a great small town. Let's make it even better.
What's the status? I heard there's a project for the Sugar Tree Corridor or something to make more improvements on Sugar Tree Street. Do you know the status of that project? Were you involved with that?
I can't really comment anything about it as of yet, but I know we're constantly looking at things. And the other thing I would say too about the, the parking, I know some people have been upset with the parking in the opposite way where you can back in and so forth. I think it's more safer and a lot of the newer cars have backup cameras. So it just takes a little bit of getting used to, but I know around the courthouse and like across Mediterranean Restaurant, I think it's one of the greatest things we can do is to have the ability to drive and then put your signal on back into those parking spaces. My wife loves it. She thinks it's one of the best things we did. Now, of course, the county offices, some of them have moved out there to the administrative campus on David's Drive, just across 134. And so you don't have as much going on with, with those entities downtown unless it's court-related at the courthouse. But frankly, I think in the long run, it's the right thing to have the parking downtown right now, the way it is, with people backing into some of those spaces. It's easier to maneuver than parallel parking. Let's, let's all face it. That's always a real struggle.
I think I was like initially like, why are we doing this for? But then I, when I looked at, I was like, oh, this opens up way more parking spots. Cause it's not just like you're parking long ways. You're parking like, kinda backing at an angle so you can get way more cars in there, which hopefully will get more people downtown.
And, and, and that I think is why we do the things we do. We wanna try to enhance the opportunity for people to come downtown, to eat at our restaurants, to go to our businesses that are downtown.
Yeah.
And things like that. You know, we can't just get in the car and drive out on Romback and, and other places. And I don't want people to leave our community. I wanna do everything we can to enhance keeping them here and spending their money locally. So let's do what we can. Now, something I'd like to see out in the future, and I'm, I'm sure Marty would like this out there at Bogards. I'd like to see the city maybe focus on doing some enhancements for South Ridge.
Sure.
I live there. I know that back when I first came to town, that's where everything was. Cause we had Kmart there. We had Bob and Carl's. You know, there was, there were stores out there. And Marty's done a great job with his business, the barbecue place. And it would be nice maybe to do some enhancements on the south end of town, you know? I remember when Duff Smorgasbord was there. I know Homer Duff personally, he's a family friend, you know, and they had the smorgasbord there. All you can eat. And of course, then it shut down and Browces is doing a great job. They've resurrected that. It's hard to believe they've been in business now for about seven years. But, you know, let's maybe focus in the future. If I could just drop a little caveat out there for my future council members. Now it's focused on doing some things to enhance the southern end of the city out along that way. I think that would be a great idea for the future.
That does seem like a forgotten area of the city.
Somewhat, yes.
Like I could probably, I don't know, never go there if I wanted to.
I can't tell you how many.
I don't need to go there, I guess.
Dee and I would need something and we'd just hop in the car and, you know, go over and get some milk or pop, groceries, what have you. There are Bob and Carl's and former, whatever it was that, and Save-A-Lot, of course. But, you know, you lose that, that little grocery center over there and Dollar General, thank goodness to their way of thinking. They, they've enhanced what they're doing and they've got things there. You don't have to get in the car and drive all the way across town to go to, to other entities. But, you know, there's only so many grocery dollars you can spend in a town and I can understand that. So, you know, it would like to be, it would like, I would like to see maybe a small grocery store perhaps open up there in the future where Bob and Carl's used to be. The one thing I think is a disappointment, I will say that, we've not really gotten a situation with the homeless rectified. I've, I've seen your podcasts and what you've done, you know, with Sugar Tree Ministries and I commend Lee with what he's trying to do. And the overall big scope, the thing of, that we're trying to, to do to help people lives and people's lives that are down on their luck and things like that. But we've still got to get this problem rectified of dealing with the homeless and so forth. It, it's a problem that won't go away. And my heart goes out to those people who are in that kind of situation. It really, it tugs at you. It really does, you know? And I sit up there and I think, what can we do to enhance this? We've got to figure out a way to deal with the homeless, you know? How would you feel if you were in that situation? You had nowhere to turn to. You know, you lose your home, you lose where you're living. How would you like to be in that spot? It's a tough situation and I feel for those people. So, you know, I just would like to see us be able to come up with a better plan. Or maybe that's something that Pat and his new administration can come up with for the future, but that problem won't go away. You can't sweep it under the carpet. You can't kick the can down the road forever. We've got to try to do something to, to help these people and get the, get the situation rectified. That's one thing though, as I look back, that unfortunately I wish we could have straightened out, but unfortunately we haven't been able to.
Seems like talking with a lot of the homeless shelter, the Hope House, Lee or Sugar Tree, it's, and then the jobs and housing services maybe, is that we need more housing. There's a lot of people with vouchers that, like families with vouchers, apparent with what I've been told. I just don't have a place to spend that voucher money to get a place.
Yes, and, and it's a quandary. I know the Realtors would like to have homes listed for sale, no doubt about that.
Yeah.
You know, I took a little, I took some backlash because I was kinda speaking out against what was gonna happen out there at the old drive-in. The only thing I had a problem with.
That's what I appreciate about you at city councils. You are like, you're not just go with the flow. You will, you will stick with what you think is right, which is awesome.
I looked at a similar concept down there. Of course, I, I mentioned Little Miami where I went to school.
Yeah.
And down at Rochester, down there by the bank off of 123, take a left there. And you can see some of these homes that they're building. The density is real compacted. And there's only like eight feet in between some of the houses. I know it's meeting our minimum codes, but I just, philosophy didn't like the approach of them being so close to each other. You know, if you wanted to put a shed, you can't build, you can't go out and buy a shed and put in there. You're gonna have to build it yourself because they're gonna be, the density is so close. The houses are too compacted together. And I just think like they were wanting to put too many houses in.
Did that get passed or did it fail or?
It went through, you know, it was, I think it was a four-three vote if I remember right, or maybe it was five or two, something like that.
Are, are they pursuing it or?
That's my understanding is they're moving forward on it and so forth.
Okay.
I think, you know, and then the other thing was with Cristo Development out there, out at the other subdivision, out behind Homeschool. I took a little bit of a backlash because of that, but I didn't want to abate taxes on the schools for 15 years. You know, I, I was okay with doing it for like five to seven years, something like that.
What did they wanna do?
They wanted to abate the taxes on those homes for 15 years. That would have meant there would have been no school revenue tax coming in for Wilmington City Schools for 15 years. See, and that goes back to the time when Kelsey Swinler was also a council member at large. And we were two of them that kinda spoke out against that. And then later I, I believe that they rescinded it down to where it would be just seven years. The schools would not receive any tax money and so forth. You know, you always have to be careful and look at from the standpoint, if we grant an abatement here or if we eliminate some taxes, how's it going to affect the schools? And what's gonna be the impact for the future? You know, you don't want to eliminate a source of funding for them. We want good schools. We want, obviously that's what we're struggling with right now with the schools, is trying to give them the revenue that they need to operate.
Who, who was getting the tax break? Was it the person who bought the house or the developer?
Okay. Well, it would be the person that buys the home, obviously, but, excuse me. You know, the developer would reap the benefits of it because of rolling back the taxes for seven years.
Interesting.
But their proposal, their original proposal was for 15, yeah.
So I think this may be a good time to transition into school stuff. Can you give us the history again of the school tax?
Well, here's my thoughts on the school taxes. The schools have very few ways that they can receive funding. They do get state money. I've heard the concept, whatever happened to the lottery? Okay. Back when Governor Gilligan proposed the lottery, this is back in 1971, so it's a long, long time ago, but I knew it when I was growing up. The funding we get from the lottery is not very much money. It might be enough to fund the schools.
You say the lottery, like the Mega Millions, like that lottery or?
Yeah, they, they don't get very much. They really don't get all that much. It'd be, maybe enough funding for two to three days, if you wanna call it that. But, but it's, it's a small amount of money. So the way it's set up in the state of Ohio, you've got property taxes or you have income taxes or the third concept is the earned income tax. Okay?
And incoming and earned is different in what way?
Well, the retirees, it won't affect theirs. It will not affect them. Those that are on a pension or who are retired, it would not affect them. That's going to be the approach they're going to use in November. That's what I've been told. Wilmington City Schools will have a 1% tax on earned income. Unlike the last two proposals, three proposals that have been to renew the income tax. Okay?
Which was 0.75, right?
Uh, yeah, they actually had scaled it back from 1% to 0.75.
Right.
Still, still didn't pass. I look back and I lament the fact that, say if we could have flipped 125 or 130 people that voted no. If they would have voted yes, it would have been approved. So you have to listen to the voters. They're the ones that make the decision. Hear what they're saying, listen and react. And I think the school board is doing the right thing now. And we, we see down the road, this is what Massey did also. Clint Massey Schools went with a tax on earned income and it's probably the, the best approach to use. So senior citizens, please get behind this. You know, this is going to help your grandson, your great-grandson down the road, granddaughter, uh, great-granddaughter down the road, you know? We need the, the senior citizens to get behind this levy and hopefully it'll pass. I know that right now, if you looked at it today, if you looked at the needle, the needle probably would still be no. Bill Lerman's approach is, I'm the eternal optimist. I got a feeling we can flip it the other way.
Yeah.
I told you before we actually started, I think we gotta flip 250 people to vote yes that didn't vote yes the first time. And I, I have some ideas on how we can go about doing that. But, you know, you look, you look at the school situation too. I thoroughly enjoyed my 12 years on the board, two different tours of duty. It ended in 2015. We accomplished a lot. And one thing that we were able to do is give back taxes to the local taxpayers. We were looking at the reasons for a failed levy when we had to deal with that. And I remember vividly some people telling us, don't raise our property taxes. We're struggling. The rural people, we're talking to people in the Port William area, the Martinsville area, out in the county.
What year was this?
This would have been, let's see, 12 years or so ago, something like that. So.
Okay.
Take it back to nearly 2000s, oh eight, oh nine, 10, somewhere along that line. And the ones that were on the board at the time, God rest his soul, Steve Murphy. One of the best board members Wilmington's ever had. He really had a passion for the schools. I miss Steve to this day. He was always a good voice of reasoning to listen to. And Bill Davis, JB Stamper and Kevin and myself, we were the board members at the time. We came up with a strategy, you know what? We need to get this income tax levy passed. So we're sitting around the table and I said to him, you know, folks, I says, we've gotta do a combination of maybe if we'll approve the tax levy, the income tax levy, let's let the property tax levy expire. They all looked at me like, are you crazy? And so we each had our own ideas and thoughts about it. And I said, you know, the two mil levy, it was either two or two and a half mil levy, brought in $854,000. How do I know? I campaigned for that levy two or three different times. I know the figure. And it was such that, you know, you could not receive any more money, even if your values went up, there was restriction on it. So it would generate X amount of dollars, 854,000. So at the tax devaluations, it would diminish. It actually started out as five mils, but then it kept getting factored down whenever it was renewed. Three and a half mils, two and a half mils. That's the way that's computed. But the main thing is the dollars that are generated. So $854,000 was at stake. What we did, we let the taxpayers know, if you approve the income tax levy, we will suspend any and all fees. We will let the property tax levy go away and we'll just receive the benefits of the 1% income tax, which we knew would generate more money in the long run. But it was a way to give back, Dustin. And we, that, that's what we were trying to do. And in good faith, we did that. And we let that $854,000 roll off the tax duplicate.
And then did you pass that levy then when that happened?
It did. It got approved.
Okay.
And, you know, it's kinda funny. I, I shared this story with you before we actually turned the mic, the microphone to start. Education business sometimes can be a fickle thing. And I think maybe we're Wilmington City Schools, take this with a grain of salt. Maybe did not educate the public enough in the last go-around and maybe the preceding levy prior to that about what's transpired with that money. We're in the education business. We have to educate and let the public know, we've been good stewards and we spend less money per pupil than the average districts around the state of Ohio. You know, we are providing a good education, if you wanna call it that, but it could be even better. And I feel for Jim Brady, who I think is an excellent superintendent. If I could have handpicked anybody personally that Bill Lerman would like to see run the school district right now. He's the guy. I've known him a long time. I knew him when it was at Clint Massey. He did a great job at Fayetteville. He's done a great job wherever he's been. He was up north near Cleveland. I had a long talk with Jim when he was interested in filling the vacancy here to be the superintendent. We talked about a lot of things. And in conclusion of that conversation, I remember him telling me, you convinced me I need to do this. I said, Jim, you're the right guy at the right time. And I'm glad he's there and I'd like to be a part of it for the future to be with him. You know, I've heard a lot of things in the community about lack of discipline. I think he will put some discipline back in the schools, empower the teachers, the administrators to do the kind of things that need to be done. I've been going to the open houses. I attended Holmes. I attended Denver the other night too. Was talking with the principals there and talking with some of the parents. I tried to listen. I think one thing that Randy Milburn said about me that still resonates with me today. Bill's a good listener. He gathers information. He reacts and he responds. And that's what I do. I listen to what people say. I hear what they have to say. I want to hear that. I put it on Facebook. If you've got concerns, reach out to me. My number's public, you know, 937-302-8060. Call me. I'll talk with you. I have a legacy with Wilmington City Schools. Deanna is a product of the school system, 1979. Our oldest son, Steven, graduated in 2000. Our youngest son, Scotty, in 2013. What a memorable event when I got to hand Scotty his diploma. Can't put a price tag on that. I have a passion for Wilmington City Schools. I want them to be the best school district they can be. I don't want to be a good school system. I want to be an excellent school district in the future. But we need to have all of the, I'll use the phrase again, stakeholders participate and buy in. I think trust is not there right now. There's a reason why. There's a disconnect. I want to build. I want to build the bridge. I want to see it get better. We've got to be accountable, we've got to be transparent in our actions, and Lord knows, we gotta do a better job communicating what we do and why we do it. I know it comes out in me, I know that passion rings true, but you know, I, I see these things, I know these things, I've been through this. You know, our schools can be better. They've made improvements, Dustin. You guys have done a lot to help enhance that and getting the story out, both of you have. And I think people need to look at this with an open mind. Don't, please, please, don't say, my kids, my kids have already gone through the schools, I don't need to support them anymore. That's not true. You know, it, it's something that will continue forever and ever. I'm 65 years old, I learn new things every day. You know, we all do, okay? And we've got to embrace change. I was not part of the board that voted to close down Martinsville. In fact, I remember being on the board in 94, 95, 96. Milt Thompson, Greg Qualen, myself, Mark, uh, those three people right there, mark my word, we wanted to see Martinsville stay alive. We spent money for new windows, HVAC facility down there, we got some money from the state. We wanted to keep Martinsville open, but they had some changes on the board, they had some different concept of things, and they had to make some cuts. And unfortunately, the Martinsville building was one of them and they shut it down, and I know there's some hard feelings down there. I'll tackle that head on, Dustin. I will go down there and talk with the trustees. I'll go meet with the people and hear, is that your only reason? Maybe down the road, we could consider reopening Martinsville or a facility down there, you know? But those, time heals wounds. I firmly believe that, okay? And we, by all stretch of the imagination, we didn't want to burn the bridge by shutting it down. I was not part of that board, as I said, that happened after I left the board before the second time. But I would just like for people in the outlying areas, the Cubas, people live down in Cuba, Washington Township, Green Township, and north towards Port William and so forth, to have an open mind and listen to what we've got to say and why we need their support. I would like to see in the future, this is my thoughts, okay, and I'll say it right now publicly, I want to see us have an oversight committee appointed. We did this once before. Have people, just citizens at large, okay? Get a, get a seven-member steering committee, something like that. I'll have somebody from Port William, I'll have somebody from Martinsville, somebody from those townships, so they feel like they have a stake, a seat at the table, and they will get a chance to see how the school tax money is being spent. You know, schools are a business, okay? Uh, remember at one time when we lost the $5 million with APX imploded and shut down, we lost four and a half or five million dollars. It's hard to cut your way up a budget when you lose $5 million, you know? And I don't want to see this continue to happen. We've made great strides in the community, we've got Amazon here now. My only hope is, is we, use Dave Hockney's phrase, look into the crystal ball, we can make things even better. But if people are upset over those kind of things and they don't want to talk to a school board member, talk to a school board member-to-be, a guy that wants to get there and make a difference. I will travel to those areas, I will talk with those people, I will listen to them because I have their concerns, I share their concerns. I want to know why they voted no. I want to get those 250 people that vote no to vote yes for our kids. They deserve it. More so than me even in the election. That's what means more to me, the school levy being passed.
Maybe also too, that helped them understand how the school levy helps them, not just philanthropy, whatever, helping other students, but it helps us when we, our schools are funded and doing well.
You know, if you have Pat Haley sitting behind this microphone right now, I'm sure he would tell you, future of economic development, you have to have good schools. Lebanon City Schools, Centerville, places like that, why do they attract jobs? Why do they attract businesses? Because they are supported, the schools are supported by those communities. Here's an interesting story. Property tax values, we know are gonna go up. Good friend of mine, he's like a brother to me, Darryl Dick, came to my 65th birthday celebration at Deanna Head, lives in Lebanon City Schools, they just passed a four mil property tax levy, four mils for Lebanon City Schools. He knows his property taxes are going to double, but he's got young kids in school and you know what he said? Bill, I don't mind paying it, those kids are our future. I don't mind paying it, I don't like paying it, but I will. So, on the flip side, look at us here in Clinton County. We're not going for a property tax levy, we're only asking for a 1% levy on earned income. Don't our kids deserve that? In the long run, you're going to spend less money than having to pay a transportation fee, an athletic participation fee, or a fee to participate in the bands. We allow people to come and use the school buildings. I don't want us going back 10 years, 12 years, to when we had to implement those kind of cost containment measures. It's counterproductive. We will wipe everything away that we've tried to accomplish if this levy goes down to defeat again. It's not a matter of just saying, don't they listen? Yes, I think the schools are listening. They're hearing what people are saying. We can't implement a state sales tax, that would take the state legislature. I have said that many times. I have talked to Shane Wilton, I have talked to Bob Peterson, I have talked to our representatives now. Please, do something in the future to fund the schools better. You're more reliant on the local people than you should be. I know we probably-
No, we're not, I was thinking we're still recording. Darn shame.
Bill Lerman on his soapbox. You know, I told you I wanted to be a state representative one day. I'm trying to articulate this to state representatives.
Yeah, warning, if you do text Bill, he will text you at all hours of the night. Giant messages, yeah.
I'm available, people, I mean, I'm a 24-hour-
Yeah, the question is, are you available?
Yeah, that's right. But seriously, I, I care about the kids, I care about the community. I'd be remiss if you'll let me share the story, because you know where I'm going with this. When did Bill Lerman decide he really wanted to come back? Two things stick out. Colin Barker, good friend of mine, I love that kid. He lives right around the corner from me and I've done posts on Facebook about him, he's a, he just loves basketball, shoots out basketball hours, the day and night, and he's at Wilmington College now. Uh, he was gonna be in the class of 2022, and it made me think about Scotty, you know, when Scotty graduated, what it was like and everything. And I was talking with his mother, Dawn, and wanted to get a picture with him. And he, he turned to me and he said, Bill, why did you ever get off the school board? I says, you know, I just felt like it had been there long enough, I just didn't want to do it again. And you know what? It just bam, right then it lit a fuse in me and I thought, this is what I miss. I miss being around the kids. I miss the opportunity to be around the kids and to try and make a difference. And it kind of got me percolating about it and I talked with Brian Schott, who's a current member of the board, he took Larry Roberts' spot, and he put the bug in my ear and I talked with Carrie and a few of the others and, you know, that, that's why I filed seven months ago. I knew in my heart, this is where I want to be. I want to be there and make a difference. I want Wilmington City Schools to be one of the best school districts in Ohio. It's one of the worst right now. We've got nowhere to go but up. We've got the man with vision that can get us there in Jim Brady. If everybody gets on his bandwagon and lets him conduct the training, I'm telling you, we'll have a long train. This man can get us where we need to be. But everybody's got to buy in and we need the taxpayers to get behind us. You know, we've said no to Jim twice now, let's not say it a third time, he's operating with one hand behind his back right now. And that's not, that's not fair to him as a superintendent that has the ability to get this district where it should be. That, that's, I can't say it any better than that.
Yeah, besides the, the money and, and taxes, what are some of the other concerns that you hear from the community about the schools that you like to address?
Lack of discipline. I think that's the biggest thing, but also safety. And, you know, I want our kids to be in a safe environment. They've done some enhancements with the entrance in and out of the buildings, which I think is, you know, great, heaven forbid we ever have anything like what happened, you know, with the shootings at some of the other schools, I won't mention those, you know, but in some of the other states and so forth. And, you know, I, I didn't go to bed at night, but what I think about that, when that happened, what would that have, what would it be like if it ever happened in Wilmington City Schools, heaven forbid? But I, I think that discipline is one aspect of it. I think we've got to engage our community. In some communities, I see a, a situation where the parents get involved and people get involved, like what you guys did with the school supplies and handing out things like that. You know, frankly, our, our teachers and some of our people need to be out there with you. I mean, you know, that, you can't just do it all yourself. I mean, we all need to be buying in and, and getting involved and trying to, to get things squared away. There's got to be a reason that Wilmington City Schools is now the worst performing school district in the county and in the lower threshold in the entire state of Ohio. We've got to find out the reasons why, we've got to, we've got to identify those concerns, and we've got to get back on track so that we can make it an effective and eventually an excellent school district once again. You know, a couple of the things I would say when I was here once before, I felt we have a good administrative team in stack. I hear a lot of good things about the people we have in place. I take pride in hiring Troy Deals as our athletic director, I had a lot to do with Troy. He and Mike Wallace have been two of the best ADs I felt we've ever had in Wilmington City Schools. I think our bus driver, you know, to me, these are the unsung heroes. I really, I, I guess it's because I interviewed at two other districts to be a transportation supervisor.
You've had so many jobs, years all over the place, with your career and your-
In the automotive business for sure, yeah. But, you know, I, I wanted-
He's got one life and he's limited to-
I'm limited to the fullest, you know? It, it's like Yogi Bear said, when, when you come to that fork in the road, take it. Well, Bill says that a few times. But, you know, I wanted to be a transportation supervisor at Massey, didn't, didn't pan out. I was runner-up at East Clinton. But I've told these bus drivers, I've, I've seen them a lot, and I just appreciate what they do. You think about the responsibility, 60-some kids on a school bus, think about that each and every day. These people are up at four o'clock in the morning, three o'clock, four o'clock, what have you, and they're out patrolling, getting the, the kids picked up in the worst of conditions, fog, snow, icy roads. Let's face it, it's not an easy chore, it's not an easy job. It's a big responsibility. And our bus drivers, I've often said, they're the glue that holds the school district together. If we don't have those kids getting picked up, they're not, they're not gonna get educated, you know? All of them are stakeholders and, and it's like I said, it's a favorite phrase that I use, but, you know, those bus drivers mean an awfully lot to me, they always have. I, I love going down there and visiting with them, Deanna would make Buckeyes for them and I'd take them in candy treats every now and then. Those people are the unsung heroes of the school district. You don't, you don't really think about them until you need them, but you need them each and every day. You know, think about that, you gotta have them.
So, what are, I'm not sure, but did you share just some ideas you had for maybe how to turn the ship with getting the levy passed?
Communication. I think you guys here do a great job with Real Change Wilmington, with your podcasts and how you've articulated, had, had, you know, a lot of the people in from the curriculum people, and, and having building principals in and, and Jim, of course, and talking about things. But to me, it all boils down to communication. Even if we need to go out and hire a part-time communication specialist, somebody that can articulate what we're doing, send newsletters out. We can send things home with kids all the time. Some parents will see it in the backpack, some won't. Send the mailers out, you know? I know you guys are great for the podcast as far as trying to get the message out, but we have got to in the next 45 to 60 days, I'll, I'll say it to you that way right now, you're not gonna flip people the day of the election. You're gonna change their mind in October or by October 15th. We've got a critical amount of days, and that's why I'm focusing on my own school board race, but more importantly, I want to focus on the kids for Wilmington City Schools. We've got to sell the message that we've done a good job, we can do even better, we will hold ourselves accountable, and we are gonna be transparent and tell you what we're doing with that tax money. We've got to do it. Our backs are to the wall, we have nowhere else to turn, and I don't want to be part of the board in 2024 that has to implement class fees, transportation fees, pay to participate. You can nip it in the bud, as Barney Fife said, nip it in the bud, pass the income tax. Plain and simple. Earned income, end of the day, it's over. Game over.
Yeah. Hopefully it doesn't have to get much worse, so that we can pass it now, you know?
Well, I'm the eternal optimist, I told you this, you might look at the glass and say it's half full, half empty, I'm gonna say it's half full. And I'm gonna try and make it full.
Yeah, that's good, yeah. Take responsibility.
But, you know, honestly, I, I think we can flip some voters. It's not gonna be easy, Bill Lerman's gonna take the money himself. I'm gonna get those 250 people if I have to. Yeah, I want them to vote for me, but I want them more importantly to vote for the kids. I really do. It, it means a lot. I, I don't want to go through another situation like what we went through in '09 with DHL imploding. It's not pleasant, you know? When you're having to do a reduction in force and eliminate staff, if you had to do it, you know what it's like. It's not fun, people. And you, and I'll tell you, there was a lot of sleepless nights for me back then. I don't want to see that happen again, but I'm willing to step up and try to do what I can to make a difference.[1635.66]